All right, welcome to Planning Commission for June 18th, 2025. We'll start with item number one, approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Tupou, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Mitchell, I second.
I'm first by Commissioner Tupou and a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 4th, 2025.
David, you want to open the meeting?
No, I'm sorry. We're gonna start with a prayer and a pledge. I apologize for that. I'm jumping the gun, I'm ready to go home. We'll start with the pledge by Commissioner Mitchell and I'll lead us in the pledge. Sorry about that.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be here this evening. We're thankful for the many blessings that we enjoy each day. We're grateful for Abijin's meet and to go over these items on the agenda. We pray as we do so that we can do so in a calm and orderly fashion, that those who wish to share will be able to do so and that we can all work together to come to conclusions. We're grateful for our city. We're thankful for all those who serve and to help make it such a great place to be. And we pray that'll help us to do our part as well. And we thank goodness you pray and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's why he's late.
All right, sorry about that, guys. All right, I'll look for item number two. Approval of the minutes from the June 4th, 2025 meeting.
Commissioner Davis, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I'm first for Commissioner Davis, the second from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, declaration of abstinence and conflicts. Does anyone have any?
No.
All right. Item 4A is a request for a conditional use permit for two new buildings located at 135 West Buena Vista Boulevard. The owners, Winco Foods, and we will turn the time over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commercial development adjacent to Buena Vista Boulevard is required to attain conditional use permit. Building A is approximately 6,000 square feet with a quick-serve drive-through and outdoor patio space. Building B is approximately 5,000 square feet with outdoor patio space as well. Each building provides space for up to three tenants. The tenants are unknown at this time. The proposal includes 5,540 square feet of restaurant and 5,540 square feet of retail, which city code requires 60 parking spaces. The applicant is providing 66 parking spaces, which is adequate for this use. And keep in mind, the previously approved Winco project was overparked, 108 parking stalls. As shown in the exhibit, the tallest point of the buildings are 26 feet. Exterior materials include metal paneling, brick veneer, and stucco finishes. Landscaping improvements are shown and will be a nice addition. Future buildings on this site will be required to receive conditional use permit approval. The parcel is zone C2. Surrounding zoning is PCD to the north, C2 to the east, C2 to the west, and I-15 to the south. Staff has reviewed the proposal and finds it meets the standards outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of C-25-04 based on the following findings and conditions stated in staff report. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
On the elevations, the back of both of those, is that what you would see from Buena Vista Boulevard?
The back is from Buena Vista, correct.
You will, as you're driving by Buena Vista, that's what you will see?
Correct.
Okay. Is there, do we know, are they allowed to put signage on? Because those were three separate businesses. Are they allowed to put signage on there?
They will.
They will? It just doesn't show it there.
Correct, yeah.
It shows it on the one, but not the other ones. I just wanted to make sure that it's, I would prefer to see some sort of signage and like maybe an awning over the windows on those windows, over the doors, something just so that when you can see it from the road, it doesn't look like the back of a building. But that's my opinion. Because it is a major thoroughfare that will, they'll be seeing just a little awning or something over, I think would make it look better. Because they have them on the front, they can just kind of move them to the back as well. That's my opinion on it.
Yeah, great, great comments on the signage there. Our city ordinance will dictate the size of that. 25% facing street frontage, 15% facing the internal lots. We don't get involved in color or placement as long as they read that, meet that square footage requirement.
But there is, but they will have signage on the back of them?
They could, yes, front and back.
Okay.
Then, you know what the timing is, the anticipated timing for the buildings in relation to the primaries?
Last I heard, they're wanting to build the Winco and these at the same time. Is their plan what they're hoping for?
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I like the comments Commissioner Bullock has made about the view from the road. And you mentioned that it could, like, but if they choose not to, I guess we can't mandate that they put some signage or make it look more, instead of the backside. I don't know, I'd have to maybe kind of look. I like where Commissioner Bullock was going with that, to make it look a little bit more presentable from the main road.
Yeah, I think they're struggling with the idea that tenants aren't known. You know, to kind of leave that up to the future tenants to meet their needs.
Right, but they could still put the awnings over everything without knowing who the tenants are. Because they have them, they're showing them on the front just to move those to the back. But, I mean, they're just for looks anyway. It would look, it would just look better. I know we mandated on a lot of other things.
I don't think a tenant into that building would actually change the structural appearance of the building, so it would still look like the back of the building on Buena Vista Boulevard.
We just need to make sure, the question here is not about signage. The question here is about making it look like the front of the building a little more. And that's all, especially where you have no windows. I mean, you gotta do something to help so it doesn't just look like the back of a warehouse. That's all. It's not, it's not a signage question, it's an architectural question.
I, no, I agree, but I think they should be able to. That's what I wanted.
Yeah, I think.
If they can't, because more than likely they will, it would make sense. You'd want to know who's back there, but like.
Dress it up, and it could be as simple as putting some of those black awnings on there.
Thanks, Eldon.
Thank you.
This is a, do you guys, I'm sorry, you guys, do you have any more? Okay, then I'll open this up to a public hearing on item 4A. If anyone here would like to speak to item 4A. Please come and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nathan Coombs, I'm the architect representing Winco Foods. Just wanted to say thanks for the staff for putting together a report. We don't have any exceptions to the conditions that are mentioned in that report and just here to answer any questions you may have.
I guess my question, based on what we just said, is there something we can do to the back of it to make it look a little more like the front? I know you went off windows there, but just dress it up so it doesn't look like the back of a building from the main thoroughfare?
Yeah, I think, you know, I obviously need to run it past Winco, but I think they'd be receptive to including a few awnings back there. And to answer the question about the signage, you know, well, I'm sure, you know, with the tenants not being known, you know, when we go into agreements with tenants, they'll be given the, you know, the signed ordinance and the maximum signage. I'm sure they would want to sign on the back of the building facing the street. Until we know that, we'll give them an outline of how much square footage that are allowed per each wall.
Yep, and like I said, I'm not worried about that. I like the project, I have no problems with it. I just want to see some more awnings around those, over those windows, just so that it looks not so plain right there.
Yeah.
The front, the front looks amazing, I love it, I think it's awesome, but the, we don't, we don't see the front as you're driving.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd say maybe one over the windows on the back of the building and maybe one on the.
Over the doors.
The stucco area, yeah, maybe one over each door or something like that.
That's all I would say, just something like that.
I just want to point out as well, like, building A will have a drive-through between the building and the street. There's, and it'll be depressed a little bit as well, the site grading, and, you know, a pretty good amount of landscaping in front of that as well.
That's, yeah. Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Thomas. I'm a resident of Warm Springs, and I live about a quarter mile from Winco and the associated projects. And I just wanted to say I'm really excited that Winco and these projects are coming in because it leads to a more walkable, livable kind of neighborhood that'll improve quality of life for people who live north of Buena Vista Boulevard. I love the idea of being able to walk with my daughter to Winco and pick up groceries, walk or bike there, saving car trips. That'll be really nice. And so I just want to encourage you to think about how to make pedestrian access more safe. So there needs to be some kind of crossing across Buena Vista Boulevard, which is really busy. And maybe it could be at Mill Creek Drive or maybe at Brio Parkway, but some safe way for all the residents who are north of Buena Vista Boulevard to get to the south. On a nearly daily basis, I take my daughter across Buena Vista Boulevard to visit the Boilers, and that's a really scary place to make a crossing on foot. Traffic volume is pretty heavy at certain times of the day and people drive very fast. So if there could just be some incorporation of pedestrian safety as this goes in, that would be really wonderful. Thank you.
Ma'am, I was gonna tease you and say that there's a culvert at Mill Creek. I used to go through that as a kid. The city is planning a stoplight into the project at the Brio, at the Brio Drive. And so a stoplight is planned to be installed there. Yep, and it'll have, you know, pedestrian lights and crosswalks and all of the, all of the furnishing for pedestrian crossing.
Anyone else like to speak to this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing portion of item 4A. And since we heard from the architect, does anybody else have any other questions?
No, I like the idea of adding those three awnings. I think it's very simple, but we'll add a little extra flutter.
Yeah, I'll take a motion.
Commissioner Anderson, I move to recommend approval of C-25-04. The C-25-04, request for a conditional use permit for two new buildings located at 135 West Buena Vista Boulevard. Four findings and 14 conditions outlined by staff, plus a 15th condition that three awnings be added to the back of the building, similar to the front of the building.
On both buildings?
On both buildings.
Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I'm first by Commissioner Anderson, and a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tupou.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This will go to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Item 4B is a request for a conditional use permit for a new commercial building located at Washington Fields Road and Hayfield Drive. The applicant is Matrix Corporation on behalf of MNC West Warner Investments LLC. We'll turn the time over to Eldon.
Thank you. Commercial development adjacent to Washington Fields Road also requires a conditional use permit. And as shown in the exhibit, the building is two stories, approximately 19,500 square feet. Proposed building meets the minimum setbacks for the C1 zone. The proposal includes a landscape plan and exterior building materials, which are aesthetically pleasing. Exterior materials include stucco, metal paneling, and wood accents. A six-foot privacy fence is required along the southern/easter boundary line due to the adjacent A20 zone. And the applicant is showing a privacy wall to the south. Due to the site distance requirement and to match the junction development, which is directly to the north, a 42-inch wall is being proposed adjacent to Washington Fields Road up to the site distance line. This will be the third location in southern Utah for Performance Fitness, and they are proposing one parking space for every 238 square feet of building. The Performance Fitness location in Hurricane provides one space for every 200 square feet of building, and the St. George location provides one space for every 293 square feet of building. The applicant has noted the parking for these established buildings are effective and even overparked during peak hours. The parcel is zone C1, and surrounding zoning is C1 to the north and west and A20 to the east and south. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the standards outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of C-25-05 based on the following findings and conditions on to City Council. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
What is the city's recommend, what is the city's standard for parking stalls?
Well, this one's unique. We don't have a set standard for fitness centers. If we want to match it up for office, retail, you know, it's one per 250. So they're in line with, with that.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was wondering. I mean, hopefully it does great and goes well, but I always think of repurposed uses and it would be, it would still fall in line if it had to be repurposed 20 years, 40 years down the line. It would still meet the commercial parking, correct?
Correct, yes, for that use.
Eldon, just, this is Commissioner Davis, just for my understanding and make sure I'm clear. The requirement for the privacy fence, is that, is that captured then with kind of the general language and the conditions where we're talking about construction drawings, et cetera? Can we assume that that's already there and doesn't need to be added?
Correct, yeah, and they, they had a, added a note on the plan spelling it out, so they're aware, city staff is aware, correct?
Great, yeah, all right, thank you.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. And originally, I just had a difficult time trying to locate where that was, but is it across the street from that current commercial development that just went in? Okay. Hoops, yeah.
Thanks, thank you, Eldon.
Thank you.
This is also a public hearing. If anyone here would like to speak to item 4B?
Chris Patton, I'm the project manager for Maddox. I can answer any questions.
No, I have no questions. I have no questions for you, I mean.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no one in the audience has any public comment, I will close the public hearing portion of this. And if you guys have any other questions for the applicant or for staff? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Commissioner Davis, I'd like to make a motion for the approval and forwarding onto City Council of item C-25-05 for a conditional use permit of the new commercial building located at Washington Fields Road and Hayfield Drive in compliance with all staff findings and conditions as noted in the report.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
I'm first for Commissioner, from Commissioner Davis, and a second from Commissioner Tupou. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tupou.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
And Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This, this goes to City Council as well, correct?
Yes.
All right, so it'll go to City Council next week with a recommendation for approval from us. Item 4C, Z-25-16, request to approve the conceptual plan of 24.53 acres of a currently zoned PUDR property and relocate four acres of PUDC located at 1075 East Telegraph Street. The applicant is Turner Farm Phase 1 LLC. And we will turn this over to Eldon.
Surrounding zoning to this parcel is PUDR to the north, R3 to the east, PUDR to the south, and R18 to the west. As shown on the exhibit, the development is laid out in an effort to blend the development into the area. For example, the proposal is showing single-family homes on the west boundary line tying into the existing R18. And as you move east, the lot sizes gradually get smaller in size with the multifamily units on the east boundary line tying into the existing R3. So kind of a taper effect there, moving from left to right or west to east. Digging into Pod 1 of the proposal is showing a build-to-rent product with 135 units over 11.38 acres. This is a 11.9 density unit per acre ratio. Pod 1 incorporates 60 single-story two-bedroom units and 75 two-story three-bedroom units. The layout of the single and two-story units will provide character to the development by staggering the horizon view there, kind of break, break up the eyesight. City code requires 15 feet between two-story units, and staff noticed the distance between units 60 and 63, along with 54 and 57 are showing 12 feet and 11 inches apart. Those units are, the city can approve this alternate setback plan if they see fit. Required parking for Pod 1 is 331 spaces. The proposal is providing 332. Parking is adequate. Amenities for Pod 1 include a dog park, putting green, clubhouse, clubhouse outdoor area, splash pad, pool area, barbecue area, and pickleball courts. Required amenity is 27,000 square feet, and they are providing approximately 31,000 square feet. Amenities are adequate for this Pod 1. As shown in the exhibit, exterior materials for the units include brico and stucco and are aesthetically pleasing. Turning to Pod 2, they are proposing 42 traditional single-family homes and 17 next-gen homes, which are similar to a patio home product. Pod 2 includes 59 homes over 13.15 acres, which is a 4.49 density unit per acre ratio. Exterior building elevations for the next-gen homes have been included and show stacked rock, siding, and stucco. The next-gen homes will provide two-car garages with a driveway that's a minimum of 20 feet long. As shown on the plan, Pod 3 will bring amenities for those living in Pod 2. Due to the location of this amenity, staff is concerned that the amenities could be pushed to the end of the development, which the applicant will need to coordinate with staff to make sure this does not happen. With Pod 2 being traditional lots and the next-gen homes providing private backyard area, staff feels comfortable with the amenities being completed with the next phase of development. In the northwest corner of the development and next to Lot 126, the plan identifies a natural spring. The applicant is currently pursuing third-party studies of the spring to determine final design and to adequately handle this spring. A note's been added to the plan with their intent to beautify the spring area with landscaping. Looking to setbacks for this plan, the applicant is asking for an alternate setback plan for the single-family lots as shown. And they are 20 feet on the front, with an exception to go to a 10-foot building front setback, rear setback of 10 feet, and then the side setbacks of five feet on one side and a minimum of 10 feet on the other. The aggregate side yard setback must be a minimum of 15 feet on the lot. Other than the noted setbacks in Pod 1, the project design is in compliance with the planned unit development, multifamily and single-lot development standards of the PUDR zone. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z-25-16 for the zone change request for the design standards of 25.53 acres and relocating four acres of commercial property adjacent to Telegraph on to City Council based on the findings and conditions in staff report. And on that commercial relocation, on that site plan there, the original zoning map that was approved showed four acres on the corner of Bullock and 1100 East. They're wanting to relocate that same acreage, four acres adjacent to Telegraph. So the net acreage of commercial staying the same, just relocating that commercial area. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Eldon, did you say the setback, was that on the next-gen, the front setback was 10 feet?
The next.
Or did I miss that?
Next-gen home will be 20 feet on the front.
On the front, okay.
It's for the single-family lot.
Yeah.
Traditional lots.
The garage is 10.
20 to the garage, 10 to the house. I don't like that. I don't like that.
Eldon, just one quick administrative question, that, is there a Pod Four? Because, when I look, unless I'm, and I may have missed it, but I'm, or is that the land that's being moved?
For this approval, there, there is not a Pod Four, a Pod Four may come in, in future development. We're looking at Pods One and Two for approval and relocating that commercial area tonight.
Well, no, I mean, because there isn't a Pod Four in the diagram either. So I'm just, want to make sure I'm not missing something.
Yeah, good, good comments, that, that may be a clerical error on that site plan. We could ask the applicant for some clarification on that.
Thank you.
So Eldon, in the report it said that Pod Three is providing amenities for Pod Two. It's an awful long way away from Pod Two. Do you know what, can you explain?
That, it's, it's going to be tied in with that permanent detention retention area. As for the location of the amenities being there, you know, I just defer to the applicant on that. You know, we raised the concern that it could come later with the development. That, that was staff's concern, we're confident we can make the amenity timing work with, with the project. But I would just ask for clarification from the applicant on that.
Okay. Yeah, I have a similar question with respect to the timing and the percentages and, and that with respect to the amenity.
Yeah, there's a condition on there that the Pod Three amenities need to come at fifty percent completion of the overall single-family units.
But I believe there's, they're proposing a hundred family units, sixty in Pod Two. So, and S, you know, it's going to take well into the rest of the project before they get, you know, before they're obligated to complete that Pod Three amenity.
Yeah, great comments.
So Pod Two people would like Pod One, that they have, that would already have been established. Attention.
Yeah, and I think Pod, Pod One amenities are, I'd ask for clarification from the developer here, but I think Pod One's locked down specific to Pod One, they're showing gate access into it, so I think there's, it's exclusive for-
That makes the point even a little more acute.
Yeah, the majority of Pod Two are bigger lots, traditional that we're all familiar with. You know, so, so really we're looking at amenities for those next-gen homes, and even those units have private backyard area that they will be able to get out and enjoy some, some grass area.
If they're, aren't they asking for a more of a, a, more setback in that phase too? With the ten-foot to the road? In, sorry, in that Pod? Pod Two? So it's, I mean, they're smaller, but they're not, but there's, I mean, it's, it's really not traditional unless they're going to go to the same setbacks as the traditional ones and then expect the amenities to come in later, I just, I feel like it's not the same. I mean, it might be more traditional, but.
Well, they're not that small, they're eight to nine thousand, or they're not that big, they're eight to nine thousand square foot lots, so they're pretty small lots anyways.
Right. Doesn't bother me either way, but the next-gen will go into the other ones. It's interesting. Thanks Eldon. This is the public hearing portion of this. If you'd like to speak, please come up, we'll let the applicant speak afterwards. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to item four C? Okay, we will close the public portion, the public comment portion of this, and the applicant may come up now and speak.
Good evening Commissioners, Matt Liu, Ascend Land Consultants, representing the landowner and developer. There's a lot to consider on this proposal, on this project. Obviously Pod One kind of speaks for itself, it's kind of all captured exclusive, you've got amenities there that can kind of take care of that requirement. On Pod Two, there's a couple interesting opportunities, how about that? So we've got spring there that we will be working with hydrologists to try and figure out how to move that water source down towards the larger area of the project on a future plan, and then still allow the Turner family to farm, the solid farm, as this first phase is being developed. So with that, we, we were trying to figure out the best way to place amenities to serve the entire project, once it's all done and built out. So we're still kind of just trying to figure out what are the best way to do that. We definitely want to make sure that that is done. Currently, it's kind of placed at the lower section, as far as design is concerned, close to the commercial side. Basically, the concept there is having a great commercial or a great amenity section that kind of bleeds into a neighborhood commercial, where folks can kind of enjoy a park setting and maybe go grab an ice cream or shave the ice or sandwich or something that kind of shares the same space. So that's one train of thought. The other thought is just trying to figure out, okay, where is the best place to do that amenity? Like I said, we're pretty excited to do the amenity, we're just trying to figure out right now where to place it. We do have some administrative or ownership challenges with this one. Currently Phase One is with the landowner, the Turner family, and the developer that is partnering on Phase One. There is no, how do I say, confirmation or commitment that that would be the same team that would finish the rest of the development. Hopefully it is, and hopefully everything goes well. So that's kind of sometimes part of the challenge in trying to figure out how to do something in the future with the current structure. But we are open to suggestions and guidance. Going back to your question, Commissioner, there is multiple pods at a future time where Pod Four will come into play. But for now, we're just looking at Phase One this evening and would welcome your guidance, your advice or counsel on the best way to manage this and, and develop this project. And then clarification, on the next-gen, the front setbacks is twenties, with house and garage.
I missed the comment about the garage. The garage and the house, the difference between the two.
Yeah, so it's all-
At first I was thinking, yeah, they were both at ten, and I was like, wait a second, that's not going to work.
Yeah.
So that was confusion on my part, but thank you.
Thank you.
So Matt.
Yes.
Is it possible to use the spring area as the amenity?
It is, it is.
Where it's a challenging spot to build on, that might be a good place to put the amenities.
Yeah, exactly.
Some, some sort of amenity there.
Some of the challenge right now is just kind of, it's, it's, it's a, a private oasis for a family member, right now, it's kind of her orchard and it's got some fruit trees and stuff, so we're just trying to figure out how to do that. But again, staff kind of recommended that, you know, once it gets around that fifty unit or fifty percent rate that we can get that resolved, and we will definitely resolve that before it gets there. And that could be a solution, you know, in a timeframe that's temporary until we figure out where the, the park setting and the full amenity is going to be. We also, you know, would consider leaning towards the single-family units, traditional units, having the yards, and again, it's not very big, but we've built, you know, cool things on eight to ten thousand square foot lots anyway. I think the, the concern would be not only the single family, but more the next-gen scenario and kind of figure out where those folks would go, you know, to recreate. Again, smaller backyards, that might be something that folks might like, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
So what, what kind of, so the amenities in Pod One, the build-to-rent, are those exclusive to Pod One then?
Correct, yeah, that's kind of what we're proposing.
Including like the dog park, even though it's outside of the, outside of the amenity?
I believe it's all encompassing within the same Pod One.
Well, it is, I'm just saying, we have the dog park kind of out on that outside road.
Yeah, so right now, it's, we're proposing fencing, wallow, the whole entire Pod One, to keep it a little bit more secure. So that is a concept that we are applying and considering.
So Drew, how, how many amenities do they need for all the single-family? If, if Pod One amenities don't count towards it, they go towards Pod One, like how many amenities total do they need, PUD, over the whole course of things?
Well, it's, it's pretty much just based on a square footage per unit. You have two hundred square feet, it doesn't say if it's a five thousand square foot unit or a fifty thousand square foot unit. It just says in a PUD, you've got to have two hundred square feet of-
Does that include multifamily with, with all that, or that's just a single family?
That's just what the PUD says for a dwelling unit.
Okay.
With apartments, it would, you know, you'd take each individual one, it'd be two hundred square feet for each one.
Do you know how many square feet Pod One amenities are?
Thirty-one, where are we? Thirty-one, four, four, four forty-nine square feet. Required is twenty-seven, I believe, twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven thousand square feet. So there's, it's over, you know, then what's required there?
And you said it's how much?
So the required square footage, twenty-seven thousand square feet, and what's being provided is thirty-one thousand four hundred and forty-nine.
So you got an excess of about forty-five hundred square feet, that even though it's exclusive to that area, Drew, you're saying it still applies to the PUD as a whole? Correct?
Just the PUD ordinance that requires it that way, so.
So that basically gives you twenty-two units worth of, to stay in compliance with the PUD.
There's still, we've still got makeup, you know, some additional.
Yeah, another-
And that's kind of where we're looking at trying to do it at a future, future phase, or future pod.
Just to confirm, is this PUD for Pods One and Two, or?
Yes.
The whole?
The PUD is the whole thing.
The whole, like, all pods?
This pool tonight is for One and Two.
Just a portion.
Yeah, the whole entire ninety-six acres is like PUDR and PUDC. That's currently zoned.
And Matt, just another question, you, you were, you were talking about Pod One team, you know, the team that's been rallied to put it together. Is, is that the same team as Pod Two? Are they one of the same? Okay, they are.
Yeah. Good clarification, no, yes.
To finish that thought.
Yes, yes.
So this group, they're all in on Pods One and Two, some of the, the rest is to be determined.
We are hopeful that, you know, it stays continuing, it's a both successful relationship for both groups, but currently that's kind of the structure of the business. Thank you.
So just thinking back to Corey's comment, and it sounds like there's ownership conflict possibly, but if the spring could be turned into some type of amenity, would that then help create a little bit of a buffer until the later pod comes? And maybe it doesn't matter at this point, it's not known, but that spring area is blocked out as, it's not going to be a home, right? It's going to be something.
Yeah, well, there is, yeah, there's some something, right, but there is still like lots there, and that's part of the reason why we got to figure out how to move that spring correctly.
Okay, so you have it as one full lot, that spring.
That could, yeah.
Rather than broke down into two, it's just one full lot, okay.
So Matt, so if, if you guys, forty-five hundred square feet of excess capacity on your, on your amenities from Pod Two, and especially where, like you, I mean, as you stated, there's ambiguity as to whether, you know, the applicant is going to finish the rest of it or sell it off to someone else or whatever. I mean, I think you've got enough, you've got enough capacity for twenty-two units in, in Pod One, you've got to, you, you'd have to come up with another seventy-six hundred square feet of amenities in Pod One, or sorry, in Pod Two, because at some point, that might just be the end of it for a while, right?
True, very true.
So I think that, I mean, however you do it, I think you have to come up with another hundred square feet of amenities that are in these pods, just so at least this portion can be like signed off, and at least that, that is done with this phase. So I think trying to have, have it kicked down the road till eventually something in, you know, all the way down by the commercial is, is done, is a stretch, a lot, a big stretch. You know, you've got turf farm that, that whole way, and no one's ever going to trick across the turf farm to get to an amenity that may or may not get built, so you're going to have people mad, and. I mean, I, I think, you know, if you, if you look at your, i- if you can figure out a way to use the spring, you know, let's just take that for an example, that has more than enough square footage to make it work, right?
Yeah.
You've got, you know, eighteen thousand almost square feet in the spring area that you could possibly make that work, or, you know, you could take one of these lots, and you could even have it be, clear down at the bottom, like Lot one fourteen or one thirteen, where it's right near the intersection there or something. You know, reduce one of those lot counts there, make it a, make it an amenity for all those people, and, I mean, I would even recommend making the dog park available to everybody just because it's on the outside road, and then you could, you could technically say, hey, we've got an amenity on one thirteen, plus we got the dog park, and.
Yeah.
And then you can address the additional one hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet of amenity needed whenever the other pods, you know, ever come to.
Again, I think that's, I think that's logical, I think that's, you know, a good suggestion as well. And that's something we can work on as far as design. Maybe some of the scenarios is if we do get to that point where we're all continue to develop the project, and we get down to the amenity section, and we are, you know, we do a really good job with that amenity piece, and maybe makes up for, and maybe that other temporary amenity that is for Pod One can be transitioned into, you know, lots at that point, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that eventually you're like, hey, we'd like the detention basin to also serve as a park or whatever, I mean, I, but it's a long way down the road, possibly, so. I think you carve off, you know, one lot worth, or you make part of the spring or something, basically one, one lot worth in Pod Two into an amenity, and, and that way, at least this project is clean and buttoned up.
Yeah, I think that would be a good condition.
What was, you said the spring was something else right now, it's a?
Yeah, so we've been visiting with Public Works, with Lester and with John and the team, and trying to figure out the best way to mitigate that. We were directed to obviously bring in a hydrologist to try and figure out how to do that. So we're at the point now, how do we keep it alive and moving to be able to provide irrigation water for the remaining, you know, of the solid farm and keep that operational? And then future, you know, how do we cap it and relocate it? So we've been getting some direction from Lester on, on how to do that and who to work with as far as on the state level. So that, that's part of the process of, you know, what we're doing as far as trying to make it work.
But there'll never be homes there? They can't.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go with the hydrologist, whatever the hydrologist says, it is what it is. So we'll, we'll have to kind of adjust as we go.
No, I'm just curious, I mean. I just, I think-
It is, this water is tricky, you know, I think there's several springs off of I fifteen, several springs off of Exit Ten between Ten and Buena Vista, and Lester kind of showed us all these different springs and how they've kind of mitigated to try to control it. So, yeah, so we're in for some fun times there.
I just, hopefully they can turn that into a park or something, that's what I'm seeing. I think that would be the best bet, once it's all mitigated, then it's a park and then it covers everything. That would be, in my opinion, the best, that way they don't lose a lot. Until that, I mean, they're going to have to mitigate that spring before they can even do anything with that subdivision, correct?
Correct, correct. And like I said, I think, you know, between that final decision and how to best mitigate, manage that, and what we're looking at, because within Pod, um, Pod Two, there's like a two A and a two B, you know, as far as sequence of development that we'll look at. So I think we've got some time and some room to try and figure out the best scenario, the best solution on that spring during that process.
And we could even say, if you want to really break it down by pod, just to give you a little more flexibility, you could say, look, amenities of Pod One need to be completed by the time fifty percent of Pod One is done, and then another seventy-six hundred square feet of amenities need to be done in Pod Two by the time you hit fifty percent of Pod Two. Just so you're not having to do like all the amenities all at once, you can see.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And again, that is obviously within the PUD, so we will definitely follow that code. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So that being said, it would just change the verbiage on Condition Nine.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Z dash twenty-five dash sixteen. Request to approve the conceptual plan of twenty-four point five-three acres, currently zoned PUDR property and relocate four acres of PUDC property located at five East Telegraph Street. With the two findings and ten conditions outlined by staff, and changing Condition Nine to say that, that the amenities of Pod One should be completed, um, before fifty-one percent of Pod One, and then an additional seven thousand six hundred square feet of amenities will be completed in Pod Two before fifty-one percent of Pod Two. As a building permit, and send it to City Council for consideration.
Commissioner Davis seconds.
I have a first from Commissioner Anderson and a second from Commissioner Davis, individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis. And Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well, this will go to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Item four D, Z dash twenty-five dash seventeen, a request to change the zoning of three point six acres located at approximately nine, ninety East Washington Boulevard, George Washington Boulevard, from the current R one-ten zoning to a proposed PUDR zoning designation. The applicant is Lance Miller, and we'll turn the time over to Eldon.
The proposal is to change the zoning from R one-ten to a proposed PUDR zoning designation, utilizing the single-family development standards. In twenty twenty-two, Washington City approved a pre-plat for this property that was in accordance with the R one-ten zoning. And since this approval, the applicant became aware of a fault line that hindered the layout of that plan. The proposal includes fourteen single-family lots ranging from fifty-three hundred square feet to ten thousand. This is a three point eight-nine density unit per acre ratio. The proposal includes twenty-nine thousand square feet of open space left in its natural vegetation with a ten-foot asphalt trail connecting George Washington Boulevard to the residential subdivision to the north. You can see there in that shaded green area, is that trail and natural vegetation. Staff should note a concern with the layout and type of amenities not benefiting the future residents of the proposed development. It seems the proposed trail is a benefit to the development to the north, rather than a direct benefit to the residents of this development. The surrounding zoning is RA one to the north, which receive bonus density credits for the smaller lot sizes. R one fifteen to the east, R one eight to the south, and PUDR to the west. The general plan for this area is low density, which allows for three to four units per acre. The project meets the three to four units per acre, but staff should note the smaller lot sizes of the proposed plan. However, does recognize the fault line on the property and increased traffic on George Washington Boulevard. There is a master planned trail on the north side of George Washington Boulevard, and the applicant is planning to extend the back of the existing sidewalk so that the width of the sidewalk is ten feet. This land extension of sidewalk will be dedicated over to the city for public use. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty-five dash seventeen for the zone change request from the current R one-ten to the proposed PUDR zoning designation as shown in the, in the exhibit, and this will go on to City Council for approval. And that's based on the findings and conditions in, stated in staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Eldon, I have, I was having a hard time trying to make this trail work, so the trail is coming off the back, like the back of the backyard of a current resident?
That's correct, yes.
So is it like, will that create public access to go through that piece of property, the current resident?
It, it exactly will do that, yes, yes, which ties into, to that development to the north.
So there's like just a little pathway that would cut through that would allow people to get from One Development down to George Washington.
Correct, yeah, the development to the north has, I think, their detention retention area there.
Oh, okay.
An open lot that allows them to, to hop onto this future trail.
So that lot is a detention basin, not a, not a, not a house?
Correct, yeah, the, the fault line runs through it, um. It, it's, it's an open space lot, that is correct.
I think I can remember what the previous fault looked like. But obviously that was before the fault line was, but it seemed like it was stepped, right? The previous, the previous plan, it was.
I'd say, say it right there.
Kind of stepped down, yeah.
Right, it's kind of laid out already on there.
You can follow those white lines a little bit, there's the cul-de-sac in the road.
Yeah.
There were.
That's the previous, yeah, okay. But it seemed like it was tiered, like there were different tiers that kind of stepped down.
The one just to the east is, is pretty tiered.
The one I remember. Is this, I remember the one by the semesters, up, up there. Prior to this.
Well, we knew, when we looked at it the first time, which is what's on there right now, but it was, um, it was just really steep.
Yeah.
Because of how.
Yeah, we, originally, if you know the lot even to the, the east was coming in at the same time, we were hoping to try to join them together. But because there's a elevation change right there between the two properties of a good eight feet, I think, or so, they didn't feel comfortable trying to join their two properties and make one subdivision. So then this one went forward and got this R one-ten and this plating. It was just a preliminary plat, right, as they didn't get finalized, I don't think. Still put it on and, and then it never did go anywhere, and then this proposal's coming back to, to go to this proposal, yeah.
It, it looks like it's going to be tight to fit homes on these lots.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at these, I mean, especially where you've got pie-shaped lots. I mean, you've got some.
The setbacks.
Yeah, you've got some pie-shaped plots that go from like thirty-two feet back when you throw in setbacks, or some of these bigger pie-shaped plots, you know, they go all the way down to twenty-two feet at the back, I mean, it's once you throw in setbacks, even though it says it's point two acres, I mean, it's, you're going to have a very, very small house on that. It's going to be really hard to fit anything in there. Even though it says it's a quarter rigger lot, it's like effectively a forty-five hundred square foot lot.
I, I think there's too many lots on this.
I agree. And not even just for the density, it's just because it's going to be really hard to build, I mean.
Like do twice as many, or, yeah, half as many, sorry, yeah, half as many lots.
The original one showed ten lots.
If I was trying to build on this, I'd be like, combine lots.
I mean, you could probably get ten in here and be just fine.
I just worry, it's, I mean, trying to bring a lot of density, it's going to be really hard to build anything here, just because of setbacks, it's going to be super hard.
Well, and that fault line kind of made.
Makes it squish it even more, yeah, no.
Design, and that's kind of where they started down this path.
I agree, though, if you cut those in half and do seven, or maybe eight.
They do eight, they don't need to rezone it.
I mean, these lots, we're talking twenty-foot wide house at most, you know, the width of two-car garage, with no front door. I mean, sure, they're really deep, right, but they're really, really deep, but I mean, I guess you could have a little driveway on the side of the yard that goes way to the back and have a detached garage, but be pretty hard to make anything work here.
Any more questions for Eldon?
Set, setbacks would be the standard, uh, five foot on one, ten on the other, twenty on the front, ten in the rear.
Thanks, Eldon. I'll open this up for a public comment, and then we'll speak with the applicant afterwards.
My name is Sherry Bowdell. I'm the secretary of the HOA Roadrunner Ridge, which is the settlement directly north. Have us, have the, has the applicant contacted them about a right-of-way through that lot which the HOA owns? It's my understanding they really don't want traffic through there.
Which, sorry, which lot are you talking about?
Where the, where the, where the, their detention on where the, where the pavement is, so where the trail would be.
And I wouldn't build a house on a fault. Anyway.
They won't be building on the fault, that's what this is doing, is pushing them off the fault line.
Right, anyway, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Do you guys have questions for the applicant, or would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners, my name's Rick Meyer with Bush and Gudel, representing the, uh, owner and applicant this evening. Um, really appreciate the comments and, and your consideration as project, or this proposal. Um, just wanted to address a, a couple of, uh, things that have been talked about so far. Uh, one is your, your concerns about the density and the small, uh, size of the lots. Uh, that's, I totally understand that, they are really small. I, I kind of had the same comment, uh, when they brought it into us at first. Um, but the owner is actually a home builder, and he already has, you know, unit size for, for these lots about, you know, how they're going to be and everything. Um, and then, um, they've already kind of planned them out anyway, you know? And instead of going for like larger estate-type, you know, nice homes or whatever, they'll still be nice, but they're just not going to be huge, like five or ten thousand square foot homes, they'll just be smaller, smaller in scale, so more affordable.
So I get, I get that, but my question is, you only, after setbacks, you've only got about the width of a garage, you know, maybe the garage in the front door.
Narrow, yeah.
So are they going to be like, look like a townhome that are not, not attached, or are they going to try to put the garage in the back?
Non-attached townhome, like down in, uh, Desert Canyons or, or out at Red Trails and, and Sunrise Valley.
Just basically one of those, just with a big backyard is all.
Yeah, mm-hmm, exactly.
I guess you could do a detached garage. And the house will look better in the front.
I don't know if you have drive space to get back there, but.
Pretty tight.
Yeah. And then regarding, uh, Ms. Bowdell's comments, I really appreciate that as well. Uh, we haven't had, had a chance to contact the HOA, so I, I'm hoping to get, get her contact information this evening, uh, so we can ha- start having discussions with them about even subbing a trail, whatever. If the trail needs to be modified to just make a loop in there or something like that, we, we're certainly open to that as well. But just have it kind of usable space in there as an amenity instead of just regular open space, you know, so.
Does there need to be the trail there?
For an amenity, it would.
That's just our.
Oh, for an amenity.
Yeah.
But if we.
It's up to you guys, if you don't want us to do it, we won't do it.
The, the fault line moves some stuff over, but it's still going to, the home still could have been built the way it was, I mean, we're not stopping them, right? They're just, the fault line is in the way. But you can still get, you can still own the property for the lot size, even though it's a fault line, right?
Right, yeah, I don't, you're talking about the old layout?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't have, do you have that, Drew, the old layout? Kind of in there, like, there's two or three lots in there.
These two lots, especially these top two, you would, it runs right through the middle of, of them at an angle through here. So these, these two lots would have been really hard, even trying to put a home farther on the back would have been small, small home on these two lots at that, because that fault line. There's a reason why this area and this subdivision's like it is, there's a reason why they had this landscaped area up above the road where my arrow is. That's that fault line that runs through that subdivision to the north at that angle, if you're following me, and my arrow right down at that, so.
Do you have some, do you have like a layout of roughly what we're talking about here with, in terms of homes and setbacks?
Homes on it, I don't, not with me, yeah.
So I'd kind of like to see what, what we're proposing putting here before we label it as PUDR, just so we kind of have a a sense of what we're doing, I just, I'm not opposed to going PUDR, I just think we're trying to squeeze in too much and, and, and also if, I mean, if the HOA doesn't give you an easement there, you know, I mean, I guess you could still loop your trail back on itself and just be a walking path, or you can do some other sort of amenity, but I think you'll need a plan for the fact if they don't give you an easement.
Right.
But.
Hey, hey, Rick, can you guys hear me?
Sorry?
Can anybody hear me?
That's the owner on the phone.
Oh.
Hi, mysterious voice, I actually have the plat map with the house, like, the house footprints, if you want me to email it to you, so you can show it. I don't know if that's possible from a technology perspective.
Is there, uh, this Commissioner Mitchell, is there any reason why that, um, that amenity area can't just be part of the owner's lot? They can't put their house there, right, but if it was re-situated and changed a little bit, I mean, it could just be a backyard.
If they're going PUDR, they're required to have some of that, that's why.
Yeah, maybe go back to one-ten.
Back to you, I'd like to see the layout if you want us to email it, but.
Yeah, the, the houses are all thirty, thirty-two feet wide, they're all by thirty-two feet wide by sixty deep is what they are. So, and I can email that if you want me to.
We can't do that in the middle of the meeting, but I still would kind of like to see that layout before we move on and say, yes, this is a PUD, I just, like, again, I'm not against going PUDR, I just think that we really need to kind of see the, the forethought in this, because I think we're cramming too much and too. Again, I'm not against going PUDR, I just think that we really need to kind of see the forethought in this, because I think we're cramming too much and too little space.
No, I.
Even if the numbers work out as far as density and all that.
I mean, it makes sense, but you also want to look at it vis a vis every, everything that's around it. So, does that mean we table? Or what? Make a motion to table?
I don't know. I mean, I'm, I, I think there's too many, I think there's too many in there for what it is. The size of the homes are gonna be small. It's gonna be hard to, to deal with. I mean, that's, that's my opinion on it. If they can't get an access for the amenity, I mean. I don't, I don't know, but it's, to me, it seems like there's too many homes in this area. I mean, they're gonna be small compared to what they were. So that, that's, that's my opinion on it.
So I guess, Rick, my question to you would, would you rather table this or just get it, get it denied, because I don't think it's gonna pass?
It's a good question. Lance, what would you rather do? You're the owner.
No, I mean, if it's, if it's just an issue of getting the, the layout so you can see what we have in mind, that's, I mean, let's just table it. And, and I would like to kind of speak to getting something smaller and more affordable in here. You know, what kind of put me down this path is the, what was it called? The Washington City's Modern Income Housing and Affordability Plan? And I mean, that says, gives strong consideration to quality zone change that demonstrate increased density in your commercial areas, mixed use or high-traffic roadways. And the, the previous layout between the, the fault line and then just the marketability of large lots. That close to that busy road due to the new interchange just made it financially unfeasible. And I, and I recognize that it's not the city's problem if something's financially unfeasible. But this does put some more, more moderate income housing in the area. And where I don't know that larger lots are ever going to sell right there on that busy road with the power lines and the fault line and all that. So we just thought it was a good compromise to get some, some more affordable housing in there. And we're happy to show the concept that we've got with the houses. It's, they're nice houses, lays out well, and we're happy to show you elevations and all of that, if that's a concern. And as far as the amenity, we can change the amenity. We actually thought it was a good idea to connect the trails and kind of use that. I mean, there is a trail that dead ends into my property from the HOA. And so we're definitely not married to that idea. We just thought it was a good idea, but we're happy to change the amenity to something more traditional as well.
So this is Commissioner Anderson's side. I think for sure I'd like to see, at a minimum, table and see what, see what's being proposed. I, I, I'm not opposed to, you know, smaller lots, more affordable lots and that sort of thing. I just think if you can only fit a doorway and a garage, it's a smidge small. I mean, I'm not saying.
Yeah, and we can definitely show the elevation and.
Yeah, so they could show, show maybe the layout of the, the lots and then show some elevation views of the structure.
Yeah. We have all that, that's easy to do.
I still think there's too many lots, even if we, even if we were to table it, I'd still want to get rid of a few lots, just so that it's, it feels bigger in there and.
And it's still feasible. Commissioners, the, the trail he's talking about, it's really not a trail, it's a chat walkway, I guess they put in, but it's, wouldn't fit the definition of a trail, what ours are, you know. And, and the problem with it, it's way over here on the west side and.
Opposite, opposite side.
Actually, you probably saw that when you laid it out, but, and then with the HOA showing up tonight, they're, they'd have to reconform this and who's gonna, they're not gonna pay for that, of course. But, yeah, that's, that's part of the issue, is that this is just a chat walkway at best, why it was even put in.
We just thought it was a good idea. We're more than happy to make it.
I'm just pointing these out for them to, to see that, the challenge on that as well, so.
Yeah, that's not an issue at all.
So what are we gonna do? Do we want to? Do you want to table it?
One other question for you, Rick, the.
Sure.
So one of the comments that staff had was that, from the engineer, that was that you'd have to show, you need to, you'll need to have some LID, you know, drainage and stuff in here. I mean, I see a little bit here. Has that, has, what you've shown here, has that been reviewed by, by the Engineer of Public Works to see if that works or?
No, not yet.
But I guess I'm just, I'm just addressing their comment, just saying we do have something on here, so.
Yeah, that'll come in the next stage at pre-plat.
I guess the only reason I'd want to bring it up is just, I think, I think in tabling this and bringing it back with some, was showing the, the elevations of the plans, the layout, et cetera. I, I agree with Commissioner Bullock that even with that, I, I, I think you gotta reduce the lot count a little bit to make it just a little more doable. And I'm not saying they gotta be like a state lots, or just a little more feasible, but, but I think also. You should, even though this is something normally done at construction ground, I think you need to look into your LID detention basins a little bit to make sure that. The laxity works size-wise, because you may end up losing half of Lot One and Fourteen if you have to make those detention basins bigger, and then the whole plan goes out the window, so. You may want to just address that a little bit, just to make sure that they're roughly appropriately sized, so we don't have to go back and change the layout later.
So would you like it tabled? Well, I'm just asking before we.
Table or denial, yeah.
Table.
Table it?
Table's great, yeah.
Do you have a date, Rick?
A date?
We have tabled to a date, so.
Next one, so the first one in July sixteenth? Oh, it's a bad one.
Is there one on any? So what date then? July sixteenth? Yeah. Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to table Z dash twenty-five dash seventeen, request to change the zoning, three point six acres located approximately nine ninety east Washington, George Washington Boulevard. From the current R one ten zoning to a proposed PUDR zoning designation. And table it to the July seventeenth Planning Commission meeting, sixteen, excuse me, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I'm the first by Commissioner Anderson, the second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis. I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This will be tabled until the July sixteenth. For you guys in the audience that came and spoke to this, it will not be re-noticed. You won't get a notice on this, so know that it, this will be a continuation on the sixteenth, if you want to come back on this. So you, you will not get a notice on it. So. Yep, I'll look for a motion to adjourn the.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I move that we adjourn.
I have a first and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll take a short break before the Land Use Authority.
Yes, this is, this is Bonnie, I'm here.
All right, welcome to the Land Use Authority meeting for June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item one on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll look for a motion on that.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve the agenda.
Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from the June fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Commissioner Davis makes a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any declaration, item number three is Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Does anyone have any with this?
No. No.
Alrighty, item four A is a preliminary plat approval for the Willa Haven subdivision located at approximately forty-two hundred South Crimson Cliffs Way. The applicant is SNS Homes, and we will turn this over to Eldon.
Give me just one sec here. This particular subdivision is proposing sixty-two lots on an area covering nineteen point three acres. The zoning at this location is R one eight. You guys are very familiar with that. Started with a general plan, we're now here at pre-plat. The surrounding zoning is R one eight to the east, R one ten to the south, and R A one to the west and north. There will be a fifteen-foot landscape strip adjacent to Crimson Cliffs Way and forty-two hundred south. The trail area that is adjacent to Medallion Way is built. However, this area will be landscaped by the applicant and then dedicated to the city. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning, request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the pre-plat as outlined. Staff recommends the Land Use Authority approve the preliminary plat for the Willa Haven subdivision based on the findings and conditions as stated in the report. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any, any questions. Maybe I should defer questions to Drew, as this is his last planning commission meeting.
I don't know, this is the one that we've, we've already looked at it with general plan amendment and zoning and pretty much the same thing they showed us back then, so I think, I don't have any questions.
No, I'm good.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to the item four A in the Land Use Authority, I will open this up. Okay, I will close the public hearing portion of this. Do you guys have any questions for the applicant? Would the applicant like to speak?
I'll, this is Commissioner Mitchell. I recommend approval. This, yeah, approval. The preliminary plat, approve for Willa Haven subdivision located at forty-two hundred South Crimson Cliff Way. With the two findings and thirteen conditions outlined by staff.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
I have a first by Commissioner Mitchell, and a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Tuppo. Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock, and I am an aye as well. This is approved. I'm just looking for.
So I move to adjourn.
I'm the first and a second.
Actually, Commissioner Anderson, I, I make a motion to thank Drew for all his years of service.
Thanks, I was gonna say that. Thank you, Drew.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you. It's good, you know, just barely got to know Merrill, but I've known the rest of you for a little while, so, but. It's been a joy to work with each of you and all the planning commissioners. I've had a blast with so many of them. We've had, we've had some fun characters sitting in those chairs, and it's, it's been very memorable. And thank you so much, though. Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, thanks, Drew. Thanks for helping us.
Yeah, thank you.
Through this, holding our hands as we, we're only here for such a short amount of time. By the time we learn it, we're done, kind of. By the time we kind of learn it, we're done. Kind of. By the time we kind of learn it, we're done.
Recommend adjournment. Move to adjourn. How about that?
I have a first and a second for an adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks again, Drew.